There are added costs, there are fewer things covered, and it has become a shadow of the great insurance that it used to be. What I am most concerned about at this point is the people who are retired, who worked 20 years ago and were promised good insurance in exchange for no raises, for working for no raises. Those people are now living on minimal incomes, and every copay that is raised, every single prescription that is raised hurts, seriously hurts.
Yes.
Thank you. When people for the last 15 years at these meetings have talked about deciding between food and medicine or seeing the doctor, it makes me want to puke. This state has great riches at its fingertips. We could use a severance tax on oil and gas. We could use marijuana. We could use sources of funding that would help the people of West Virginia. What I have seen in West Virginia for the past 23 years is a growing philosophy of austerity. People don't deserve to be helped, they don't deserve food, they don't deserve snap, they don't deserve chip. They don't deserve anything. Meanwhile, we will give them jobs that at most pay $9 an hour if they're lucky. We will give them jobs that are part-time now. We will give them jobs that no one can live on any longer, and we will expect them in addition to pay their insurance. We will expect them to be responsible for their health in a state that is polluted beyond belief and is about to with oil and gas pass a level of pollution that not only will kill the planet, but is going to make us cancer alley all the way through, just like Louisiana. And you cannot ask people to run or work on a treadmill when what they inhale and what they drink is going to make them sick. Therefore, PEIA needs to step up its game. It needs to be funded, and it's going to need to be available at high levels to cover cancers that are going to be developing, especially childhood cancers. There are now texts out in all sorts of ways of the steps in which children will develop pulmonary cancers, right, as a result of fracking. Therefore, PEIA is going to have to step up. There are entire towns in Ohio where kids have Step 1, permanent bleeding noses, right? So PEIA will have to step away from austerity. It is going to have to find a permanent source of funding. It is going to have to stop thinking in terms of austerity and that we don't need to provide anything for anybody that we don't have to provide. It is going to have to stop listening to Washington that just wants to kick everybody off of insurance, they announced last night, who has a pre-existing condition. I'm already paying more as a retiree, and this is just starting. The people of West Virginia who have given up their health, who have given up their land, who have given up the possibility of safe survival deserve a funding source and insurance source for PEIA. Listen to the drums. We don't want you taking money from oil and gas. I'm speaking to politicians here. We want you thinking about the people of West Virginia. Thank you.
Thank you. We have about 15 or so seats up front if some of you all would like to have a seat. We've got plenty of seats up front here if you need to sit down. Up next is Nellie Osborne.
I'm Nellie Osborne. I am a retired teacher after about 35 years of service. I also represent Marion County Retired Educators Association. As I am listening to what's coming out in the newspapers about these hearings, the buzzword I'm hearing scares me to death, and that's privatization. And it's the one thing that I don't want to see happen and the one thing that I don't want to hear. I was in an auto accident earlier this year and made a trip to the ER. Thankfully, everything is fine. But just for an example, it went to PEIA first. They allowed about a $5,000 charge for any ER visit. $780, $655, of course, of which I was responsible for because that's part of my copay or my out-of-pocket deductible. I kind of get confused. It all comes from the same pocket, but anyway. So after a lot of paperwork and phone calls and got it rerouted to my insurance carrier through our auto insurance, they paid the doctor that saw me for maybe total of four minutes, $1,329. I'm sure PEIA would have cut that down to maybe $300. And they paid the ER of about a $5,000 charge, $4,486. Now, if any of you are businessmen or women, are any of you businessmen? And you're in business to make money, correct? So if there is privatization, what happens right now is the state pays our claims. They do hire a company to do the paperwork, but basically, the state pays for the cost. If we're doing privatization, then they're paying or we're paying, and I can kind of see where that's headed because the state's trying to save money by what they're doing now, which means someone is paying not only for the cost of health care but also for the profit that a private company would make. Is that a fair assessment if you're a businessman? Okay. And I'm looking at the charges that were on the original bill that came just from my recent visit, knowing full well that if I didn't have insurance of any kind, there would have been no one stepping in to say, "You don't have to pay the full amount, it's all coming out of your pocket." Other problem being, I'm a retired teacher. We have gotten no COLA, no raise of any kind. That was not part of what we were promised, however, we were promised health care. So I had consulted a financial advisor after I retired who informed me that for every 10 years that I was retired, I would be losing 25% of my buying power with the money that I was getting, which since I've been retired eight years now, I can see his point. I think I've probably lost that much in eight years. So the problem is privatization is not a solution for any of us that I can see. As I said, it's going to raise the cost for everyone. So I'm looking at you needing to come up with a totally different plan, and I agree with the lady that just spoke in that we have the resources, and the resources are coming from this state and should support the people of this state. I have friends and relatives in Alaska, and they have done a very nice job of doing that there. I think our state should do the same for its people. A lot of out-of-state and/or foreign people stand profit from what's under the ground in West Virginia, and I would like to see the task force looking in that direction for solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, up next is Crystal Atkins.
Hi, I'm Crystal Atkins. I'm a special ed teacher in Marion County, West Virginia, also a member of AFT Marion County. PEIA has been a growing problem for many years. The problems with PEIA is now hurting the employees it was designed to help. As a teacher, I personally experienced the effects of the rising problems with PEIA. It's unacceptable for any public employee to have to take a second job just to be able to cover their medical expenses. A solution is needed now. This past winter, public teachers and service personnel took on the fight for all public employees. This task force was formed to find a solution to PEIA. There is one easy solution: tax the oil and gas industry. We need to stop. We need to stop allowing big companies to come into West Virginia and take what is under this great state soil without having to pay a cost.
Yes.
So it is up to this task force to go back to Charleston and demand that our elected officials do what's right by the state employees, and that is tax the oil and gas industry. Senator Carmichael, I have a quick question for you. Are you willing to go back to Charleston when session starts and ask your fellow colleagues to support a bill that would tax the oil and gas industry to fund PEIA?
Well, it's interesting because we've already done that. We did it, the House of Delegates didn't take it up, but the state senate passed a tax on the oil and gas industry and tiered it on the severance rates. So yes, obviously, I've already voted for it.
And how much are you, how much was the tax you proposed?
It was a 2.5% increase, or might have been 2%, which is, by the way, 50% increase.
Or 5%? Would you support a higher increase on tax?
I mean, I hear you saying that we need to tax the oil and gas industry. Currently, they pay a 5% severance tax, which brings in this current fiscal year probably about $120 million.
And is that money going to fund PEIA?
It goes into the general revenue fund, which funds PEIA. Well, and I heard my colleague, I don't want to put words in my colleague's mouth again, but there's all this clamor for a dedicated revenue stream, and it should be the oil and gas industry. And really, if you want to tie your health care benefits to a very volatile commodity that goes up and down, up and down, I think that's a mistake. I think you're far better off to have a general revenue allocation that takes money from a distributed group of sources and funds PEIA from the general revenue fund. Am I wrong about that, Dale? Did you say that?
Wouldn't it help us if we took as one of the sources to fund PEIA, tax the oil and gas, just one source to help fund it?
We do that.
But all the money goes to PEIA?
Well, all the money goes into the general revenue fund, which gets distributed for, we spend about $1 billion on PEIA. We spend about $2 billion on public education, your salaries and so forth. So, I mean, you know, there's alternative uses for every dollar in the state budget, and there's people that want it, you know, in different mechanisms and manners. So your suggestion is a good one. I think the rise in a severance tax and we tier it to the price of the commodity, I think has merit. We've already voted for that. I think Senator Beach voted for it and others. So it's a good suggestion, we've already done it, and it didn't make it through the complete legislative process, but we'll take another run at that, yes.
And will you help to get, will you advocate for it to get passed in the House of Delegates?
I don't have a vote there, but yes.
You can talk to your colleague.
Yes, yeah, I mean, whenever we pass a bill in the senate, we're pretty anxious to get it passed in the House.
Thank you guys for your time.
Heather DeLuca-Nester.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for coming. First, I'm a teacher here at South Middle School. I teach 8th grade science. I'm also the president of Montegalia County Education Association. And tonight, I'm going to speak to you on behalf of myself, pretty much. I've been coming to the hearings for a lot of years, and I finished my 17th year of teaching. And I have to tell you that I come from a long line of educators, one of which has retired at 32 years of service from tougher Catholic schools, excuse me, and the other two have left the state. That was my dad and my stepmom. And the reason they left the state was because about 30 years ago, my stepmom got breast cancer. And she didn't get it once, she got it twice. And they had PEIA, they were teachers, and they chose to seek health care outside of West Virginia. So certain things were covered here, certain things were not covered here. And, you know, today, she's alive because they went to Virginia, where treatment was experimental. That was when bone marrow transplants weren't common, and she had a bone marrow transplant. And so they couldn't afford to stay in West Virginia and raise our family and teach school. And so they've gone to New Jersey to teach at the Educational Testing Service. They make tests, they don't actually teach anymore. However, lots of people sitting in this room do not have those options. And I know that you have a great task at hand, and you have to find funding sources, not one funding sources, because I also know that every year you have to add to that money. And so I'm here to protect my mom, 32 years of teaching, these people sitting behind me, and people that have left. HBO Vice called me, and they said, "Hey, listen, we're on a story on teachers that are leaving West Virginia to go to other states. Can you give me some names?" Took me 24 hours to get them five names. I urge you to keep your people in West Virginia and to take care of the people that take care of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thomas Bain.
Good evening. My name is Thomas Bain. I am the regional rep for WBEA. And I don't have a personal story to tell regarding this, but I think we need to talk about funding sources for PEIA. I agree with Mr. Lee and Senator Carmichael that one source isn't going to be a fail-safe stopgap. I feel we need to find several sources, and that is why throughout Montegalia County, over 1,000 people in Montegalia County filed a petition. What this petition asks for is raising the natural gas severance tax to 7.5%. The reason for that is, when you look at these natural gas sites, how many license plates from Louisiana, Texas, Oklahoma? We are not bringing jobs into this community. We are not bringing jobs into this state, permanent jobs into this state. We cannot allow natural gas to go the way of coal and timber, and once the resources have been pillaged, pack your trucks up and go home. We cannot let it happen again. I also ask that the corporate net income tax be raised to 9% also on PEIA. For over a decade now, this tax has been lowered and has not helped the citizens of this great state not one iota. And finally, I've heard many about in these meet hearings all across the state, the potential of food tax being lifted. I ask you, please, please do not have a food tax on the plate for PEIA. We cannot allow the citizens of West Virginia be pitted against the public employees of this state. This is not a tax that needs to be done to treat the poor and needy of this state. We have a gold mine here with Marcella Shale, and we're letting it slip through our fingertips. Thank you.
Okay, number six, Norma Taylor.
Good evening. My name is Norma Taylor, and after being a high school teacher and high school librarian for almost 30 years, I've remained active by representing retirees as the secretary of the West Virginia Association of Retired School Employees, vice president, president of the Harrison County Association of Retired School Employees, and a three-term director of the West Virginia Education Association Retired. I have consistently spoken for the 34-plus thousand retirees on issues that affect them. I never miss one of the PEIA hearings. I knew from third grade on that I wanted to be a teacher, not because it paid well, but because I loved learning and passing that knowledge on to students and encouraging them to follow their dreams. While salaries have consistently been low in West Virginia, in the 1970s, we were given insurance instead of pay raises. The coverage was good, and it ran into problems in the late 1980s. That helped to cause the 1990 teacher strike. And a promise was made to us when we went back to work to fully fund our insurance. However, as we know, that promise wasn't kept. Especially in the last few years, the failure of the legislature to fund PEIA caused a surplus to be used to make up for that shortfall of funds. This has led to increases in premiums, co-pays, deductibles, and out-of-pocket expenses for retirees in order to make up the deficit. Retirees do not receive any pension increase to help offset a higher cost. That means they receive less pension income. For many of our older retirees, some of whom only receive $500 a month, this means choosing whether to purchase medicine or groceries. After a life of dedicated service, not one retiree should be put in that position. The legislature should not be allowed to avoid its duty to fund PEIA and provide medical care to its loyal, hard-working employees and retirees. In answer to their lament that we want to provide the funding, but there's no money available, VARS has shown legislators a funding source. Instead of just giving away the deep shale gas to outsiders as your predecessors did, coal and timber, increase the tax on the oil and gas that is leaving our state. And in answer to those who say the companies would leave the state, they will not leave. They have invested too much already. The brightest spot of all in PEIA for retirees is Humana. After listening to speakers from the Act of Employees on Tuesday night, I realized fortunate retire, I realized how fortunate retirees are to have Humana. They administer our Medicare and PEIA supplement. Humana has a call center with employees always willing to get answers and explanation for questions. They have employees who provide seminars and explanations for any changes planned for the following year. And in the last 10 years, I've only had positive comments for Humana. Please continue that arrangement with Humana for the retirees. In closing, please remember retirees live on fixed incomes. Most have never received any pension increases, and that means whenever there are increases in premiums, co-pays, deductibles, and out-of-pocket expense, the retirees receive a pension decrease. This cannot continue. Retirees who willingly gave so many years of dedicated service deserve better. And I'm going to add one more thing. Even without increasing the severance tax on oil and gas, there is enough money to fund PEIA with all the tax cuts that have been given to companies over the last 10 years.
Thank you. Mary Ann Ferris.
Good evening. I'd like to begin by thanking you all very much for your willingness to serve on this task force and for taking this job so seriously and listening to us because it's a matter of life and death for us. I'm Mary Ann Ferris, and I am the president-elect of West Virginia Association of Retired School Employees. I am a continuing member of the Board of Directors for West Virginia Education Association Retired. I am also the past president of Harrison County Association of Retired School Employees and its future vice president. Norma and I have just switched offices. As such, I feel that I represent adequately over 30,000 West Virginia retirees who are very, very much concerned with the status of our health care in this state, and I think rightly so. We are the group that were promised health care in lieu of raises, as others have already pointed out. We have received little or no increases in our pensions, but we have certainly felt a loss in our disposable income due to inflation and to increasing, ever-increasing, health care costs. I have been retired 16 years, and my income has decreased by $300 per month due to my health insurance increases. Now, I can afford that, and I'm fortunate that I still substitute occasionally because I like to do it, and it does give me the extra spoiling my granddaughter's income that I need as well as what I need to pay for my health care insurance. I also want to remind you that we have around 900 employees and retirees in the state of West Virginia that due to legislative action in the past are guaranteed a pension of $500 a month. That's their pension. Can you imagine what their social security is? About 300 maybe? We'll be liberal and say 400. Who can live on $900 a month and pay for these increased health care? Plus the inflation. You go to the grocery store one week, and a gallon of milk costs X amount of dollars, the next week it's X plus 10 cents. And I know math, Major Dale. The PEIA proposal for a premium support voucher plan can only make matters worse for retirees. It will increase costs for them. It will decrease the number of possible providers because many of them will not want to accept that. It can also mean that it will limit perhaps the doctors that they may choose that they've been seeing for 10, 15, 20 years and they're satisfied with. If the insurance company that insures them does not consider him or her in their provider system, then they have to change doctors. It's possible that the hospital that they're most comfortable with could not be covered by their insurance company. So please, I encourage you to encourage the legislature and the governor and anybody else to continue the health care coverage with one provider plan that we currently have, and that is Humana. Why Humana, you ask? Because the retirees that I represent are extremely satisfied with the care and the coverage that Humana has provided. They have the call center, as Norma has already said. They also have special programs to address health issues that could cause increased medical costs such as diabetes, the heart program, cholesterol training, obesity programs. Those are very valuable programs, and they offer that. As I understand it, this task force's purpose is threefold. One was to examine the policy for PEIA coverage, which you have already done. The second one was... The second one was to solicit input, which you are doing through these hearings. And the third is to come up with funding suggestions. And I have a subject here. The first one I want to suggest is that you encourage our legislature to stop giving away our revenue sources through tax credits to out-of-state companies and corporate. You can't give income away without having a revenue source to replace it, and guessing hasn't proven to be correct. I also think that we need to implement and encourage our legislature, who doesn't want to increase any taxes, that it's necessary that we do so. The tax that was discussed last time in the last legislative session on sugary drinks. Yes, we have the highest obesity rate in the nation in West Virginia. Sugary drinks contribute to that. If we put a tax on it, maybe that will encourage our youth especially to go to an alternate source of water. It's been discussed about increasing the cigarette and the beer and liquor. Absolutely. Why not? Need your sentences. If I want to sin, I should be able to pay the price. And last of all, I agree with those who suggest the tax on the Marcellus shale and Utica gas. In conclusion, please, please encourage our legislature and the PEIA Board and all those others who are involved in this to take care of the West Virginia retirees and do it responsibly. Thank you very much.
You did a great job. All right, Jeanne Grant.
Jeanne Grant from Harrison County, Legislative Chair. I am the ex-Region Two Director, covering 11 counties, one of the largest districts. I am also on the WVEA Retiree Executive Committee. I retired in 1997 after 35 years of teaching. My retirement pay, as well as my social security and my husband's retirement pay, since he was a civil servant, gave us an adequate living wage. However, with the death of my husband in 2011, I lost one-third of my income. Now, at the same time, my retirement pay had decreased. I didn't check to see how much until this past year, and I was amazed. I was over $300. It is now less than it was in 1997 when I retired. And every time your premium increases, my living amount decreases. It goes down. Only the legislature can rectify this outrageous problem. In 1990, I walked the picket line, and I was promised things by the legislature. Again, in 2018, I walked the picket line. I spoke to myself as an old warhorse. Though this old warhouse is revitalized, my voice and my anger will be heard at the next legislative session. I intend to be there. I intend to be heard, one way or another. Until then, I'm working in my home county prior to the election. PEIA Board members, you need to convince the legislature. You need to do something. The actives and the retirees are committed. You saw that issue. PEIA premium and benefits, they are in the legislature's hands. And remember, we will be keeping a close eye on you. Thank you.
That was very inspirational. Up next is Barbara Fleischer.
Good evening. First, I want to thank all of you on the task force for coming and for attending all these different hearings around the state. I'm sure you had other things you might have wanted to do this evening. But I also think we owe a really big thanks to our education employees. And the reason I say that is because I represent Montague County, and I have for 22 years. And in addition to education employees, we have a whole lot of public employees. And it's a little more difficult for them because they're employed by the state. And so they, I think we owe a big thanks, and I'd like to hear a hand, for the education employees who also helped the public employees get a 5% raise. It was huge. All of you who are down there. I've never heard anything like that on Marvel in my life. And a lot of these gentlemen and ladies have taken up things that I had wanted to say, but I just want to mention them, and I have a few more things. I think the number-one thing that I have hearing from my constituents is about retirees. And that is both those who, say, work for WVU or who work for corrections or who work for schools that maybe make under $5,000 a year, custodians, cafeteria workers, they are really having a rough time. And so I think that is really, really critical, that we don't forget about them. Another thing I've been thinking about, as I'm sure everyone has been thinking about lately, is school security. In addition to investing in PEIA, we're also going to have to invest in school security. I do not want PEIA to be left behind again if we make investments in schools to make sure none of our students, none of our teachers, none of our school service employees get shot. We may have to do both. So when you are looking for these resources that we need to have, you need to be thinking about that, because the voters are going to expect that we're going to do something about that in the legislature. Last night, I went to a visitation for a kindergarten teacher who died of cancer at North. And I found out she was the third teacher who died last week of cancer. And there is a long list of people at that particular school that have died of cancer. I think that our first, a couple of our speakers have talked about cancer. And I think it's really important that we have people who work their entire lives. My daughter went to North. It's a wonderful school. I think it might be the most wonderful school she ever went to, but something's happening there. So we have, in addition to a security issue, we may have some increased costs that we don't understand and we don't know about. And what we're all talking about here today is people who worry that they're not going to have enough to cover their health care. That is what we're talking about, especially the seniors who, say, only made $5,000 a year, and their pension and security is very, very small. The last thing I want to say, in addition to the fact that I am on PEIA and it means something to me personally, is you get what you pay for. We need to make sure those resources are there, and that is your primary assignment, is to find the resources. And I think we do need to look at a variety of resources. And I think you're right. The oil and gas is a prime source, but it has historically been very, very volatile. So I think we need to look at the sugary drinks. I mean, there's a recent report from the Center for Budget Policy and Priorities that looks at that and looks at all the legislation in other states and what kind of a bang you get for that buck. I think we need to look at marijuana. I think we need to look at the syntaxes, like some of our retired people have said. We need to look at that because we're not going to lift a rock and find the money for PEIA. It's just not going to happen. We've been looking under rocks for resources, and it's amazing to me that we found the money for the 5%. But we need more, because this is critically important. I want to make sure that PEIA doesn't come in last, because we need to think about those state employees and those teachers. You know, all they have had with respect to their premiums is raises. It used to be free, and it's been raised, and it's not, we're not talking about a pay raise, but a raise in their cost. And we need to realize that that's unsustainable. So again, I want to thank you. I want to thank the people in our audience and thank those who couldn't come here today. And I appreciate your hard work on this.
Good evening to you. I'm glad that you're here. I'm glad that the task force chose Morgan County as one of its destinations to three and four choose. You know, having been a previous member of the Blue Ribbon Society, I understand the dedication and the time it takes to take on all this information, pile it, and work with it later on. That being said, I know you would rather be someplace else, as Kelly Fleischer mentioned, but these folks behind me right now, they too would like to be somewhere else. This is not the place they chose to be this evening. We have a problem before us. In 1990, my father and my sister were part of the equation going on in Charleston at the time when a promise was made for PEIA. Fast forward to today, my daughters are now part of that promise that we made to fix PEIA. And I've pleaded on the floor before to you, Mr. President, to do something then and not kick the can. And I don't believe we're kicking the can now. Taking the time to analyze this, fact gathering, what we're trying to accomplish here, and I appreciate that. But tonight I come to you not just as a legislator. I've come wearing many hats. I've come as a politician. I've come as a father and a husband and a role e in PEIA. And also, more importantly, these are my constituents back here, but for me, these are my neighbors. There's teachers in this crowd that teach my children. Probably if I look hard enough, I probably find a cousin in the crowd. But again, they're my neighbors, and that means more to me than anything in this world. It's a great honor that they send me to Charleston to be their voice, but it's also an honor to live next door to them. Next door to me is Putnam County, Raleigh County, right on down the list, folks. If you're in West Virginia, you're my neighbor. I treat you that way. I know our ideologies on the Senate floor may be different, but you, Mr. President, know that we can shake hands, it's like a contact board. We go off the field, we shake hands and have lunch together. That's just the way it is. And I've known that since day one, we came in together. So it's appreciative that you're here this evening to listen to these folks. And I do encourage each and every one of you to really listen, because quite honestly, they think this is a dog and pony show. And I think it's up to you, sitting around here before me today and later on when we go out to Charleston, to diminish that thought. Show these folks that we really, truly are listening. Eliot Hutho had to leave early, but he wanted you to know that he's standing strong with these folks back here and is ready to do whatever we need to do to fix this problem. If you've heard a lot of folks here give you suggestions, Mr. President, I just want to remind you of one that was brought to the Senate floor while we were there, dealing with a health card that the Department of Defense is now using in the United States. That representative is here tonight. I don't know if he's scheduled to speak or monitor, but I hope that this commission, this task force, takes up with that health card, presents it as a viable option to fix the problem we have. Again, I appreciate you being here and thank you for allowing me to speak.
Jamie Tomlin.
I'm from Grant County. Been over there as a teacher for over 30 years. Forgotten that it's on my desk, but I do ask for your prayers. Fatal accident yesterday claimed a life of one of our 12-year-olds. Students, young man. We had school today, students, staff, and it was difficult, so I guess I make your excuses. But anyway, just remember, our county, our school, and family, in your prayers, we appreciate Couple things, just with PEIA directly, it's just some frustration. I'll start with, I finally found it, and Mr. Lee and Dr. Gupta made this comment first, and I think Dale might have tweeted it or whatever. He said, "Dr. Gupta, Commissioner of the Bureau of Public Health, quoted the West Virginia's lead to nation in total numbers of prescription drugs they take frequently for chronic diseases such as high blood pressure or diabetes that can be treated with exercise and lifestyle changes." Now, I know Dale, and I know Dr. Gupta didn't mean it that way, but that's not true for type 1 diabetes. And I think it's sad that we put type 1 diabetes in with diabetes. My wife is a type 1 diabetic, been a type 1 diabetic for over 30 years. She couldn't prevent it. As of today, there's no cure. She can't exercise at all, even though exercise is good, still good for her, and she does. She can't eat just the right food to get off her insulin pump that she's on right now, even though eating right helps too, as her doctor says. So dealing with PEIA and diabetes has gotten very, very difficult. Number one, you try to call PEIA as a teacher. When can you talk to them? When can you talk to them? I mean, I teach Dale, and you coach, when do you talk to PEIA about issues? And you get on there, and you're on there. Her aunt was in the hospital, and I had some time, and I thought, okay, we got to deal with this issue over glucose monitors that was fighting with PEIA over. 50 minutes with PEIA. And the young girl was very helpful. She was trying her hardest. Don't get me wrong. I know I preached, I told her, I thanked her, but you know, she sends me to HealthSmart. Guess what? Another 50 minutes to an hour. Where else do I get sent? CVS. Another 50 minutes. So I literally, I was in a hospital, you know, and I had time while her aunt was in the hospital, and I wrote it down. I mean, I timed it, and I wrote it down. That's got to change. That's got to change. It's going to be like banks. You can't get to them. So I would suggest, I would hope PEIA would extend their hours a little bit, at least once or twice a week or something. Go to seven o'clock or something. Another program is, which is an excellent program, it's called the Face-to-Face Diabetes Program. Excellent PEIA program. My wife will graduate there from November. Well, graduates is a nice word to put. She's getting kicked out, though. Okay, that's more or less what it is. It saves us money, but why not continue? Why can't she continue in it? She's taking care of herself. She's very, I mean, she pricks her finger daily. I can go back there right now and squeeze her finger, and I'll get blood out of her. But I'm serious. I'm not kidding. I'm going to prove it to you, though, you know. But that's how many times she pricks her finger. You know, we watch and see what scores are on ballgames and everything else. She wants to know what her A1C is. She gets very upset. She just went on an insulin pump, and thank God we have insurance, PEIA, and they paid, you know, for the most of it, you know, except for a few thousand dollars. But the glucose monitor she used, she was using coincide with what many metronics recommend the PEIA will cover. So we had to go through the appeal process. Oh, my gosh. Oh, my gosh. You got to be kidding me. It was so frustrating. We made a trip to Charleston as well, just to try to talk with them. I made one mistake. I said, "Yes, it is a convenience, too." And they said, "That's it. We can't do it. It's not because of..." Well, my gosh. For a type 1 diabetic to have anything convenient? I mean, come on, we can't let type 1 diabetics have anything convenient, you know. A lot of them, they have... Not that they have enough more in their life, pricking their finger and everything else. So anyway, give us choices with glucose monitors. Give us choices. We already make a choice with our doctor. We went to WVU Medicine up here for years when she first got diabetes. Excellent doctors, excellent nurses, but it is a factory. We go up there, you go in a cubicle, you wait, you wait, you wait, the doctor comes in, "How you doing?", opens the chart, opens the folder, backs out the door. Two minutes, maybe. Two minutes! And I'm trying to talk, "Listen, I'm sorry, I got to go, I got to..." And God bless him, he had patients everywhere. So we went to an endocrine hospital in Cumberland, Maryland. Excellent, excellent. 30 minutes minimum time. My wife runs out of questions to ask her. That is health care. That's health care. So about 15 years ago, she was having problems getting paid by PEIA. She was having problems. She got out. So we now pay the full price because we're not leaving her. We're not leaving her. And she's getting up with retirement, and we said, "No way. You can't retire. We pay the full price." And we can't talk her into it because I know PEIA, the payments to the medical providers are better. I don't have no one calling me too much anymore about, "Hey, pay this bill. PEIA's not paying it. What's the problem?", blah, blah, blah. That's better. That's better. Give PEIA credit for that. But we can't convince her doctor to get back into it because of going through the appeal process, because of, well, they're still going to tell me as a doctor and my wife as a patient, what you're going to be able to use to treat your diabetes. It's still not, there's no choices. So I would hope that, and Dr. Gupta said that, the wellness preventive medicine strategy has to be a very, very critical component of this whole discussion. Well, that's wellness and preventive medicine is what my wife tries to do, and PEIA, you know, it's difficult to do that. So give us choices. We've talked about the gas severance tax. Why not? It's, you know, no-brainer. Speaker Carmichael, I know you said it well. Let's keep it going. We need to pound it and pound it and pound it until we get into store, into store. Speaker Carmichael, if I could say, "We'll give you $113 million next year," you'd probably be like, "Yeah, bring it on." $1.50 tax on a pack of cigarettes. We need to do it.